Okay, well, welcome everybody here today. I'm calling proceedings to order at 2pm on Monday the 20th of April. And welcome to the Redlands Performing Arts Centre. I'm Andrew Chestman, Chief Executive Officer of Redlands City Council. And it's my pleasure and privilege to officiate at the Redlands City Council Declaration of Office and Post-Election Meeting today. Before we begin, if you could just make sure that your phones are turned to silent or turned off. And in the event of an evacuation, we move through the doors over here and off to our right. And follow the directions of our very capable RPA employees. The assembly point's just out near the car park. And unfortunately, I guess it goes without saying, we are sort of hamstrung by the COVID-19 restrictions of social distancing and we aren't able to have guests here and the general public. And that's unfortunate, but that's why we're live streaming today to Facebook. And we're doing everything we can to make this as accessible to the public as possible. So the Declaration of Office and Post-Election Meeting is being audio and video recorded. And it'll be placed on our website as soon as possible after the meeting. And Kia here, our videographer from council, is also going to film the Declaration of Office ceremony and stream those individual declarations of office on our Facebook page, as I said. Can I acknowledge the Kwanzaa Mooka people, the traditional custodians of the land, of the seas and waters of which we gather today and pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging? Can I please acknowledge the mayor-elect and all councillors-elect here today? My fellow members of the executive leadership team, our council staff that are here assisting with the meeting today. And it's now my pleasure to invite Dr Robert Anderson, or Uncle Bob, as we know him, to welcome us to country. Now, he couldn't be here today as he's keeping safe at home. So I ask you to turn your attention to the screen behind me.
Yura, Yura, welcome to Redlands City situated on the Kwanzaa Mooka coast. I take this opportunity to congratulate Mayor Karen Williams on her reelection. I also congratulate the successful candidates and the outgoing councillors for the service to Redlands City during their term of office. Redlands City Council staff have been active in their reconciliation group. And I applaud them for this work in understanding the richness of our cultural heritage. I encourage all councillors to continue their work with the Kwanzaa Mooka Yulu Murribe Aboriginal Corporation to develop good outcomes in caring for Redlands City. On behalf of the Kwanzaa Mooka nation, I invite you to celebrate with us our cultural activities. Yaling Biller, welcome to the whales as they pass through our sea ways. Buwangan, or Dolphin Day, and of course, the Kwanzaa Mooka Festival.
Thanks Uncle Bob for sending that video message. In accordance with section 100 of the Local Government Electoral Act 2011, returning officer Mandy Heinrich gave notice of the final results of all polls for the election of mayor and councillors of Divisions One through to 10 of Redlands City Council, following the local government elections on the 28th of March 2020. And it is my pleasure to announce the new council. Councillor Karen Williams, Mayor of Redlands City. Councillor Wendy Boglari, councillor Division One. Councillor Peter Mitchell, councillor Division Two. Councillor Paul Gole, councillor Division Three. Councillor Lance Hewlett, councillor Division Four. Councillor Mark Edwards, councillor Division Five. Councillor Julie Tolty, councillor Division Six. Councillor Rowan Mackenzie, councillor Division Seven. Councillor Tracy Hughes, councillor Division Eight. Councillor Adelia Beridge, councillor Division Nine. And councillor Paul Bishop, councillor Division Ten. Congratulations. On behalf of the executive team and all our employees, I congratulate you all on your election as Redlands City councillors. And not so long ago, when you put yourselves forward to represent this city, either as a councillor seeking reelection or for the first time, the world was a much different place. The freedom we've enjoyed for generations has suddenly changed. Our homes have become our safe places and our city is less travelled. And today, the reality of the coronavirus pandemic has been made, sorry, today, the reality of the coronavirus pandemic has made dedicated and unified leadership even more important for our community. Being selected by your community is both a significant honour and a responsibility. There's no more noble profession than that of public service. And inside the Redlands City Council organisation, councillors, you'll see more than a thousand employees who are equally dedicated to the purpose of serving the very same community you now represent. And despite much practice in disasters, for this pandemic, there's no playbook for the task ahead. And there's no quick fixes to the challenges we face in dealing with COVID-19 and beyond. However, you can be assured that council's workforce stands ready to assist with those challenges and to make sure residents and businesses get the service and assistance they need to see to it that we emerge from the current situation in the best shape possible. Indeed, this is a disaster that affects the very fabric of the organisation itself. And I've been astounded by our own responses to pivoting on a dime to provide services and support to our community in ways we never thought possible. As an organisation, we could not have foreseen current events, but have over many years built a resilience that holds us in good stead in times such as these. And so as Chief Executive Officer, I'm extremely proud that we are in a strong position to address what lies ahead, to listen to your collective direction and implement the will of the chamber and in turn, the community you represent. Our financial position is strong and our organisation efficient. We're working hard at being action focused, which has driven and been supported by our previous council who should just take a moment to recognise. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the previous council for the direction that they provided. And in particular, outgoing councillors Murray Elliott and Paul Gleeson. And for councillor Elliott, 23 years of public life is no mean feat. And I thank him for the way in which he interacted with the organisation. And we thank him for his bright t-shirts. While life in Redlands Coast today may be unrecognisable in the immediate future cloud, the organisation's long-term vision remains clear. And all of us at council look forward to working with you and providing you the best advice without fear or favour in the true spirit of public service excellence. So now move to the Declaration of Office. And before any person can act as a councillor of a local government, they're required to make a declaration of office in accordance with section 169 of the Local Government Act 2009. So I'm going to call upon the mayor and each councillor in turn to stand and make your declarations. And you can use that as an opportunity to also sign your certificates. They will shortly be collected and framed and will be available following the meeting. And if you'd like to make your declaration using your own holy book, please place your left hand on the book. It's not compulsory and is the choice of each individual. So it's now my great pleasure to introduce and invite Mayor-elect Karen Williams to stand, make a declaration and a brief thank you speech.
Thank you, CEO. I, Karen Williams, having been elected as mayor of Redlands City, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles and code of conduct under the Local Government Act 2009, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
There is one moment in time where we get to thank really important people who have taken us on this journey. And there's a few people that I would like to honour and many people that I'd like to thank. If I could just acknowledge that this year, I'll celebrate 30 years of marriage to my husband, Peter. So more than half of our married life, he's supported me in serving this community. He stood beside me, behind me and in front of me. And made many, many sacrifices raising our family while I got to serve this wonderful community that I was born into. To my daughter Hannah and her partner Shaun, she's always been very free coming with her media and communications advice, and she's well placed to do that. So thank you to Hannah and Shaun. To my daughter Adeline and her husband Nick, who along the way provided me with a little ray of sunshine amongst the darkness of COVID, a week before the election, introduced my first, our first granddaughter, Rose Daphne Turnbull. And 2020 will be a year we'll remember for many reasons. Can I just say that I know I speak for all of the councillors here, that your family, our families, were the consequences and the impacts of everything we do. And sometimes I feel it even more harshly than we do, so I thank them. So to our law supporters, to my law supporters, you know who you are. Your friendship, your support, your undying loyalty does not go unnoticed. I intend to continue to make you proud of this city and the people who serve it. The honour is all about service to our community today and to the communities of tomorrow in Redlands. So I stand here ready to, more importantly now than ever, serve this wonderful Redlands Coast community for the next four years. And I thank you for the privilege.
And it's now my pleasure to invite Division One councillor Wendy Boglari to stand, make her declaration and a brief thank you speech.
Thank you. I, Wendy Boglari, having been elected as a councillor of Redlands City, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles and code of conduct under the Local Government Act 2009, to the best of my judgment and ability. Good afternoon, everybody. I too would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the lands we are gathered upon today and pay respects to their elders. I am honoured to be here today amongst the councillors and congratulate everybody on their return and welcome the new councillors. Thank you doesn't express my deep gratitude to my family and friends for their support over the past couple of months and for my family always. There are no words sufficient to express my gratitude to my division for once again placing your faith and trust in me. The commitments I make is to be an unwavering community voice, to seek integrity, transparency and accountability in all decisions and to work and listen with all groups within our amazing Redlands community. Your overwhelming support was humbling and gave me increased energy and purpose to continue in that vein to represent you. These are the most uncertain times that as a community we've had to face within my lifetime. There are horrific health impacts from the coronavirus and the devastating economic impacts. I believe it is the responsibility of our new council to hit the road running and draw on all our different collective skills while working collaboratively to meet the community's needs. This to me is the overwhelming goal. To achieve this, one of our priorities would be the pending budget, which will be a budget like no other, as our normal business's usual priorities are adjusted to accommodate the health and economic impacts as they evolve. I encourage all councillors to make contact with your community, sporting and business groups, so as we enter the budget deliberations, we have on-the-ground ideas and impact knowledge from a variety of areas. To the new councillors, there is a wealth of knowledge within this quorum and the organisation to draw upon. Do not hesitate to ask, especially as these are greater than usual challenging times. We must all need, we all need to stay connected, to keep strong, healthy, minimise impacts and stimulate our economy. Again, I would like to express my gratitude to my local community, friends and family and Redlands as a whole for your support and also for the compassion, caring and responsible actions shown over the past weeks between neighbours and community groups due to the virus impact and restrictions. Thank you for saving lives. It is this community spirit that makes me so proud to call Redlands home and again be your community representative. I look forward to working with you and for you in the coming term. Thank you.
It's my pleasure to invite Division Two councillor Peter Mitchell to stand and make his declaration and a brief thank you speech.
I, Peter Mitchell, having been elected as councillor of Redlands City, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles and code of conduct under the Local Government Act 2009, to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you. It's fantastic to be back as councillor. And I'd certainly like to thank the communities of North Stradbroke Island and of Cleveland for the strong vote of trust in me and my style of consultation and leadership and communication. So it's wonderful. I won't let you down this term and I certainly look forward to getting back to work together. A particular vote of thanks again for my fantastic family for their support, tolerance and patience during the last term and particularly during the election period. Daughters Alice, Emma, Sophie and Violet, Mum Jo, Dad Keith, Brother Tony, you all deserve a mention. But it seems my wife Jane actually deserves a medal for her selfless support. But it seems that my thanks and love might be all you get, honey. So I'm sorry about that. It's really how you treat and respect people and the relationship in your life that matter. And I don't see my role as councillor or the key objectives of this local government as any different. Front of mind at present are the businesses and families that have been hit badly during the COVID-19 crisis, particularly on Stradie and also around Cleveland. More than ever, we're in this together. I've been excited to see how quickly the businesses, business community, the not-for-profit guys and council itself have reacted. You're amazing. And all levels of government seem to be reacting and the focus of the recovery will only sharpen over time. So there's lots of important work to do together this term. So let's all put our shoulders to the wheel. Thanks.
It's my pleasure now to invite Divisional Three councillor Paul Gole to stand, make his declaration and a brief speech.
I, Paul Gole, having been elected as a councillor of Redlands City, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles and code of conduct under the Local Government Act 2009, to the best of my judgment and my ability. So help me God. Ladies and gentlemen, I can only express my gratitude to the community that once again placed its trust and faith in me to be your elected advocate. I won't deny that the first term has been quite challenging. And I've learnt quite a lot from the people who are sitting here today and also the community. It's by engaging with you as our community that I've been able to achieve the efficiencies and the outcomes working with my colleagues here today. To the new councillors, welcome and welcome to our new term. I must express the utmost gratitude and admiration for my family who stood by me through these very trying times. And it is a trying time. My, my wife Yanichka, or Yana for short, pulled me into line many a time through this election phase. And my children stood by me through the challenges of the actual election phase. They were the ones out there walking the streets with me, delivering to the post boxes to get that information out to you, the community, so that you could make a strong and informed decision. So once again, thank you. We have some challenges ahead of us now with the COVID virus. We will work strongly and collaboratively together as an organisation and a board of councillors to achieve strong results and to support you, the community. Thank you.
I'd now like to invite Divisional Four councillor Lance Hewlett to stand, make his declaration and a brief speech.
Thank you. I, Lance Hewlett, having been elected as councillor at Redlands City, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles and code of conduct under the Local Government Act 2009, to the best of my judgment and ability. Well, I just want to thank everybody. For me re-entering my third term in council, it was a very unusual, unprecedented kind of campaign with the COVID virus. I congratulate the mayor on her reelection. First of all, I'd like to thank my wife of 31 years, Sheeney Hewlett, because without her, I couldn't have gotten through not just my married life, but this last eight years in council. She has been the backbone of support. She's my confidant. She's everything dedicated. And she's also a nationally accredited teacher herself, which she works full-time. And she still manages to come out to all the functions with me. Her dedication to the community is shared with me and without her, I couldn't have done the job. I'd also like to make the special mention of my brother-in-law, Peter Dowling, who was an ex-MP who, nothing is ever too much trouble for him during the campaign, whether it was putting in signs, dragging trailers around, whatever I asked of him, he did. And he also works as well and has to make a living. And it's not only people like Peter, but the volunteers that are out there that get behind your campaign, many of which we couldn't use because we didn't have people on polling booths. But there were dozens and dozens of people who put their hands up to help me and my community, which means so much to myself and to my wife. And they're from the community groups that you meet such through the school communities, whether it's volunteer marine rescue, whether it's lines or rotary, Kuchi Mudlow Coast Care, the Heritage Society. There's so many grassroots organisations that make this job so worthwhile and so important. And that's the reason I love this job is the community aspect of it. And I sincerely thank the Victoria Point and the Kuchi Mudlow Island jetty for their enormous support for this whole campaign and through the last eight years. And I look forward to serving them with as much dedication as I possibly can over the next four years. Thank you.
It's now my pleasure to invite Division Five councillor Mark Edwards to stand, make his declaration and a brief speech.
I am Mark Edwards. Being elected as a councillor of Redlands City, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles and code of conduct and the Local Government Act 2009, to the best of my judgment and ability. First of all, I have to thank family and my wife, my wife Suzette and my two daughters, Taylor and Tiffany. Unless you're in public office or experienced yourself, you don't know the demands that are placed on everyone's families. And I trust our newly elected councillors, welcome. But you will find there is a challenge for the demands on balance of life and doing this job. I'm really, really humbled to be elected for representing Division Five. Division Five has now elected me consecutively for the third term. That's unprecedented for Division Five as there has been a lot of challenges because it's a mixture of mainland and island issues, which does create a level of complexity. And I thank the community for having the faith and trust to back me again. And I again call on all the community and the community groups to help advise and inform me as we work forward together. I'll also try my best I can for the whole of Redlands City. And I look forward to all of us councillors working together and collaboratively over the coming term to be the best we can and deliver the best outcomes for our city. All of us are here because we want the best for our city and I'm sure we can achieve it. Thank you.
I'd now like to invite Division Six councillor Julie Tolty to stand, make her declaration and a brief speech.
Hi Julie Tolty, having been elected as a councillor of Redlands City, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles and code of conduct under the Local Government Act 2009, to the best of my judgment and ability. I'd like to take a quick opportunity to sincerely thank the people of Division Six for putting their faith in me for a third term. Their support has been humbling and overwhelming and I'm very dedicated to making that worthwhile over the next four years. I'd like to thank my family and my friends for supporting my community work and my role throughout the last term, the term before and throughout the selection period. I cannot say thanks enough for all that you have done and all that you do in support of my role. Thank you so much. I look forward to serving this council and I thank my colleagues in advance for their collegiality and support in the coming term. And I offer the same to each of you in the course of this term. And of course, congratulations and thanks to our mayor Karen Williams for leading us through another four years. And I would like to take a moment to thank the hundreds of council staff who are out there today and here, not hundreds here, but out there working hard and operating in a really current, unusual and difficult environment in support of the residents of our city. They're out there, they're doing it hard and they're doing it really well. So I'd like to take the opportunity to thank them all. So thank you very much.
It's now my pleasure to invite our new councillor from Division Seven, Rowan Mackenzie, to stand and make her declaration and a brief speech.
I, Rowan Mackenzie, having been elected as a councillor of Redlands City, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties in the office in accordance with the local government principles and code of conduct under the Local Government Act 2009, to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you residents of Division Seven for the honour of serving as your councillor. I am humbled and privileged by your decision. I sincerely thank the many people who supported my decision to run, my campaign, volunteered or hosted a sign for me. Without you, the election result may have been different. I owe a huge and heartfelt thank you to my husband Doug for championing me throughout this journey. He worked behind the scenes and provided the support I needed to ease the load of campaigning and I could not have embarked on this decision without you. To my wonderful children, Aidan, Jack and Josie, thank you for your grace, patience and encouragement that relieved my mummy guilt. To our extended family and close friends, I thank you for your prayers and for being my strongest advocates. I look forward to working with this newly elected council and what we can achieve together over the next four years. And I'll work to the best of my ability to achieve the best outcomes for our community.
It's my pleasure to invite Division Eight councillor Tracy Hughes to stand, make her declaration and a brief speech.
Thank you. Thank you, CEO and my fellow colleagues, Yura. It was just lovely to be here. I, Tracy Hughes, having been elected as a councillor of Redlands City, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles and code of conduct under the Local Government Act 2009, to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you. I too would like to acknowledge the Kwanzaa Mooka people, the land, the seas, the waters that we share and it's the privilege that we all work together. And as I have an opportunity to serve my community and my city by being re-elected to Division Eight, it's just an enormous privilege. Truly it is. I am so thankful to the support of my residents who have again chosen me to represent them as their councillor. During the past months of the election campaign, I need to make special mention to the team that have supported me. And I've had an enormous team, my husband Mark and my daughter Carrie Anne. I don't know, there's lots of other people that have helped along the way. But like every councillor before me and probably to come, without our families, we just can't stand here with the strength that we have because you are our backbones and we love you dearly. We really do. And Mark and Carrie Anne, thank you. They took leave from work and they spent hours every single day installing signs, moving signs, fixing signs and looking forward to the inventive graffiti that they would find along the way. And this campaign wasn't any different to any other. We had some good bits of giggles along the way with the graffiti, which I'm not promoting in any way, shape or form as such. Mark led a convoy of trailers every day and I think the residents will be so thankful that all those trailers have disappeared. And I probably should apologise to everyone for the trailers out there. Thank you so much for those that helped put up with us along the way. Most days, I spent about five hours walking from Wellington Point to Kalabah every day. And I had a team of walkers that helped me along the way. And sometimes, and we were all out there at five o'clock in the morning or six o'clock, or sometimes it was seven AM. And we had lots of rain and it was wet and soggy. But the privilege to serve our community was just wonderful. And I had people coming along and joining me walking. But one special lady I met along the way, and her name was Betty, a recently retired nurse. And she said, I'll walk with you. And I thought, oh, okey dokey. And out she came and she was inspiring. We talked about our We talked about our wildlife corridors. We talked about the beautiful parks and she said, I haven't been here before. I haven't seen this before. And the gardens, the beautiful gardens of the residents. And I just want to thank Betty especially, um, she was just wonderful. Uh, a resident that stepped up, that cared about the community and it's, it's just so important. Accountability is also important. And I would like to advise that my declaration of funding has been completed and lodged for the campaign. And it's a public information. I paid for my account myself from my own dedicated bank account. And I contributed to each week over the past four years. And that is a public document. I think it's really important that I wanted to, to say that please, you're very welcome to look that up. I will continue to make myself available to my residents in the most personal way I can. Please know that you can pick up the phone and call me anytime. I am delighted to support you in whatever way I can. I will also continue to drive and walk around my division most afternoons. I can't say every afternoon, but most afternoons, again, which I've done for the last four years. Please know that you can stop and chat and let me know if I can help you in any way because it truly is my privilege to serve you. Thank you very much.
It's now my pleasure to invite the second of our new councillors, Division Nine councillor Adelia Beridge, to stand, make her declaration and a brief speech.
I, Adelia Beridge, having been elected as the councillor of Redland City, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of the office in accordance with the local government principles and code of conduct under the Local Government Act 2009 to the best of my judgment and ability. To my husband David, my family, my strong supporters and my voters who helped get me here today, I say thank you. I ran a simple campaign message, time for a change, let's do it. And you did. You wore my shirts, my hats, displayed my signs in yards and in cars. You spread the word and it's because of you, what you is what you did, that I am your new voice in council. I told you together we are powerful and together we are strong. And I did not get here by myself. I got here with a great support team and a community that got out there and worked for me and made me strong. I was elected because I had a community who wanted a better future for the people of Redlands and I wanted to make that difference. I have the heart, the strength and the determination to do this. And when you're doing it right and you love what you do, it's never that hard. I will continue to work morally, ethically and with integrity. Because if I don't, I know my voters and the loyal people who worked hard to get me elected will quickly steer me straight. Here today I give my pledge to you, uh, to my, on my parents' bible because this is very important to them. I will continue to work hard with the people of Redlands because when we work together, we are stronger. And when we work together, there is nothing we can't achieve.
And now I'd like to invite Division Ten councillor Paul Bishop, stand, make his declaration and a brief speech.
Thank you, Yura. I, Paul Bishop, having been elected as a councillor of Redland City, declare that I will faithfully and impartially fulfil the duties of office in accordance with the local government principles and code of conduct under the Local Government Act 2009 to the best of my judgment and ability. I too would like to acknowledge the Kondamuka people, traditional owners of the lands in which we gather. Also, all of the pioneers and ancestors who've built this incredible now city. Uh, to my peers, all of the councillors duly elected and, uh, and mayor Karen Williams. Particularly, um, to Adelia Beridge and to Rowan Mackenzie coming into office for the first time, welcome. We will all need to work together. This is an extraordinary time. Uh, COVID-19 presents us all with both the challenge of constraint and the opportunity of designing our future together. It's with that spirit that I will work with these peers towards a better future for Redland City. And you, the community, particularly those residents of Division Ten, Berkdale and Thornside, thank you for always being my north star, my guiding light. I will always represent you as we make decisions and plan for that future. As captains of industry, working with captains of industry as civic leaders. I, I'd like to take a moment to thank very much my darling wife and campaign manager Elise Parrots, my children Zali, Oscar, Jacamo and Zephyr, my brother Michael and far away overseas, my brother Stephen, extended family and the so many friends, those who've delivered letterbox drops, those residents who've hosted signs, volunteers who've contributed and people who've simply had discussions over the last few years. And those who've got together to work in what I call local community action. Democracy is like a muscle. We must all work together to use it or we risk losing it. As your representatives, please stay in contact with those who are representing you in future and reach out to your neighbours at this time. And, uh, I'd just like to thank all of our, uh, executive officers and particularly the support staff who do the heavy lifting for councillors. As residents, if you have concerns, please contact council. If you're not happy with what you hear, get in contact with your local councillor. And if you're still not happy, talk to your fellow residents and find ways to work together. We will design the future. And to quote with, uh, Arundhati Roy, who this morning posted a, a vision about COVID-19 and the future. She speaks about it being like a portal. As we think about the past and the future, we're living in this present moment and we need to decide what will we take with us from that past. We're going to have to design a new future. I'm looking forward to doing that with these peers, with our executive staff and also with you, the residents of Division Ten and across Redland City and our region as we move into the future. Thanks very much and all the best.
Thank you councillors and, uh, one of our officers, Lizzie's going to collect your signed certificates. I'd now like to invite our mayor, Karen Williams, to make the mayor's speech.
Thank you CEO and, uh, good afternoon, Yura. And I too acknowledge our traditional custodians, Kondamuka people. And we walk in their footsteps and we seek their guidance as to how they've cared for country over many, many centuries, in fact thousands of years. Um, it's an absolute honour to be elected as mayor for the third term and to represent this amazing city, this amazing community. And I'd firstly like to offer a warm congratulations to each and every one of you who will join me, um, us as colleagues as we steer through some really difficult times ahead. Over the past few months, you would no doubt have dreamt of today, um, hoping to put those nightmares of campaigning behind you. The day you get to finally commit to your role as councillor and reflect on that gruelling election campaign that nobody really enjoys. But I doubt any of you ever envisaged what would be, we would be looking at today, the picture as you see it. We have been however afforded a very special privilege by the people of Redlands. And on your behalf, we thank the people of Redlands for putting together a council that will steer them for the next four years. And it can't be underestimated how important that will be right now as we steer through a time in history where we face a pandemic, a disaster that many of this generation have never experienced. And traditionally, the mayor gives a speech at a swearing in ceremony that reflects on the role of mayor and the honour of being elected into such a prestigious privileged position. But I think today is not really about such speeches. Nor is it a pronoun, a time to use pronouns such as I or my. Now is the time for collective pro- pronouns such as we and us. Not the royal we, but rather the Redlands we. The councillors here today, the other elected members of our city, the business community and the broader community of our Redlands coast, we are all part of that very special collective. And that's what I speak of today because it will take a concerted and coordinated effort to support our future. Each councillor here today ran as an individual candidate in last month's election and you will today, or you have today been sworn in as representatives of your respective divisions. But I ask you to continue to serve as one united council. For we cannot tackle the challenge ahead of us without that unity. We cannot tackle that challenge ahead of us as individuals. We must put aside our individual commitments and promises made during an election and instead lay a collective foundation for the future of this city. To do so, we must be flexible. The task ahead of us now is very different to the one that presented itself at the beginning of the election campaign. And as this situation unfolds, it will no doubt change again. And like all other communities, we are being tested in a way that we have never, ever before encountered. In the coming months, we will be dealing with the significant issues of the budget and how we can help our community recover from a pandemic. We will need all hands on deck and my commitment to you is that as mayor, I will take hold of yours and row alongside each and every one of you. Redlands residents deserve that and they expect it. There will and should and always will be robust debate. We will not always share the same views and we must always rigorously analyse what we do. But we should never lose sight of the fact that the community is counting on us and we owe it to them to deliver. I'd like to sincerely welcome our new councillors, Rowan Mackenzie in Division Seven and Adelia Beridge in Division Nine to our team. And I apologise that this is not a swearing in ceremony that any of us have experienced before. But we promise to make it up to you in some way so that you and your families can enjoy the respect that you've earned from your individual communities. I also want to take this opportunity, opportunity to acknowledge all former councillors who have helped lay the foundations from where we start our journey today. Could I also take this opportunity to thank each and every employee of Redland City Council? They've been mentioned many times today. Working together for all of us, their job is also very important. You'll be tasked with implementing the measures needed to support our community through our current situation. Business as usual just simply won't apply as we can see today. In the immediate future, I urge you all to be flexible, to be innovative and responsive as we work together to support our very special residents of Redlands coast. Again, knowing all of you, I know you're up for the task. And I also know that the Redlands we is also up to it. Redlanders are resilient. We've seen it many times. We've shown that together, working together, we can meet absolutely any challenge put in front of us. Redlanders are united. Countless times we've stood shoulder to shoulder and stared down storms, fires and other disasters. And we will start to stare this one down as well from today. And make no mistake, we will come through this current situation. It will not last forever. And it will not define us as a community. Instead, I believe we can turn these challenges into opportunities and it in fact will make us stronger as a community. It will force us to adapt and in doing so, it will force us to support each other when we need it most. We'll protect our most vulnerable, we'll lift up those in need and we will celebrate what we all love about our Redlands coast. And after it's all over, we're going to take a big, deep breath, adjust our course and set sail for our next adventure. And we're going to do that together. So it gives me great pleasure to present you, uh, with our incoming Redland City council. Thank you.
Thank you mayor and congratulations mayor and all councils. This now concludes the formalities of the declaration of office. And I'd again like to congratulate everybody, um, for their declarations today. And I'd again like to congratulate everybody um for their declarations today.